Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of Boston Town Area Committee. I'm councillor Barry Pierpoint, I'm the chairman of this committee, and my vice-chairman councillor Patsy Marson is unable to attend this evening, and so I've asked councillor Neil Drayton to act as vice-chair for this evening. Before we move into preliminary items of this evening's agenda, I need to run through a few housekeeping details. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance this evening that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. Would all persons addressing this meeting please do so through the microphone system at all times? This meeting is being recorded, please ensure the microphones are turned off after speaking. If any members of the public attendants, please also read the following bullet points. Restroom, oh sorry, I'm reading that out, it's an instruction. Restroom facilities are available for ladies on this floor and halfway down the main stairwell for gentlemen. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, officers are to call everyone out of the building to the nearest fire safety point in the car park. Please be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Anyone who is deemed to breach this requirement will be warned and asked to refrain. If their behaviour persists, they will be asked to leave the meeting. Now we'll move to part one of the agenda, the preliminaries. Apologies for absence. Early apologies, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, apologies have been received from councillor Patsy Marson, councillor Emma Cresswell, councillor Sandeep Ghosh and councillor Alison Austin.
Thank you. No other apologies, are there? No? All right, thank you very much. Any declarations of interest? Any member wish to declare any interest in respect of any of the items on the agenda? No? Okay. Minutes. Do I have permission to sign the minutes with the meeting held on the 30th of January 2025? There's been minutes to sign. There they are. Thank you. Just hold on a minute, folks, while I just sign the minutes. There you are. Thank you. Update on the actions from the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any outstanding actions from the last meeting? I'll ask Phil Perry to respond.
Thank you, Chair. This update is for items that are not already covered within this evening's agenda. The first action is the benches mapping project. The chairman and I met Faz Kazmi on the 21st of February to discuss the app project. Following the committee's request to share the location of the benches, we provided the information and we're now looking to get them mapped for future reference.
Just before you carry on, could you, is everybody clear about this benches situation is about? Everybody's happy about that, are you all clear about it? Okay, thank you, Phil. Carry on.
Thank you. The second action is regarding community outreach. Following the presentation, you'll remember that members discussed identifying a community group from each ward to work with the emergency planning and business continuity officer. We'll pick this item up when we get to the work programme later in the agenda. Next item is the green flag and a meeting of the green flag working group took place immediately prior to this meeting, where the group received a project update from Scott Higgins on the position of the project to date. The group then discussed the project plan and delegated tasks in order to get an action plan developed. The group also set up its future meetings, which will be face-to-face just prior to each BTAC meeting and on teams each month in between, with the next meeting scheduled for the 23rd of April. An update on the action plan, we fed back to each committee going forward and a report from the group to committee will be brought to the November BTAC meeting for consideration. The next action is the community governance review. At full council on the 3rd of March this year, the members approved the terms of reference for a community governance review for publication and stage one consultation. It was agreed to appoint councillors Dorian, Pierpoint, Cresswell, Gilbert and Gleeson to Community Governance Review Meeting Working Group to consider the responses received during the two consultation stages of the review and to present draft proposal and final recommendation to the full council for determination. The next action involved highways, maintenance and police, where issues concerning the highways, maintenance and police performance will be addressed in the new municipal year in the work programme. And finally, we had an action regarding bus routes, following the issue being raised at the 30th of January meeting concerning the cancellation of the Fen Side bus route and the committee's agreement to follow up on matter. Marion, Managing Director of Bryline Travel, has kindly agreed to address this committee.
Thank you, Phil. First of all, I'd like to welcome you, Emma, into the meeting this evening of BTAC. And if you'd like to put your microphone on and care to address our committee, then we'll take some questions afterwards, all right?
We are going.
Your all systems going, you're live. If you'd like to get as close to the microphone as you can, you might have to pull it down towards you a little bit, I think that's better.
It's because I'm short. I was notified a couple of weeks ago about the last meeting and the discussion that was had in reference to the Fen Side service and the cancellation of the Fen Side service. Can I just say, Fen Side has not been cancelled. It still runs the same route, it just doesn't go to the interchange. So the actual service itself hasn't been cancelled and it's probably run for 20 years around the same route. What it doesn't do is it doesn't go through the town centre to the interchange, but it does go to the marketplace. So I was quite surprised, you know, when I heard that it had been cancelled and there was a general uproar about that and the consensus was that it was, but it hasn't and there was no way we would cancel something that we'd been operating for 20 years. But I think there's a general misconception about what we do and who we are, which is why I've sent you this booklet, which I put together really quickly, so it's, you know, it's not totally descriptive, but hopefully it'll give you an overview because Bryline is your local bus company. We've been going for around 44 years now and as a family, we've worked incredibly hard to make bus services work in a rural district with very little support. And I talk about funding, everybody thinks bus services are funded, they're not. In this area, they are predominantly commercial. So we will get some money, which is BSOC, which is the Bus Service Operators Grant, which is now under review again by the new government. We haven't had what you call Bus Service Operators Grant since probably October last year, because it's in review. And this is pennies per kilometre. So it's not, you know, we're not talking five pound a mile towards fuel, it's pennies per kilometre. We also get what's called concessionary reimbursement and we get that from the county council for the concessionary passes that we carry, but that's not 100% of the fare. I think currently it's around 52% of the fare for the concessionary reimbursement. Obviously, we carry students and we do that on the basis of a per-seat ratio for education transport, so that also goes into paying for the services. But as Bryline, we are bus, we're not bus and coach. So we don't, you know, we're not able to go and do private hires in the middle of the day and charge £1,200 for them. We earn what we earn from putting people onto services and as we know, it's rural. So some parts are very sparsely populated and it's an awful lot of mileage. We have an issue with Boston Town and we have an issue that's been ongoing for quite some time. We've operated it, I think, since 2004 and then obviously everything changed in terms of the highways in the centre of town and the town itself, I'm not saying anything nobody knows, has changed dramatically. If I can give you an example, Boston Town Service pre-COVID in 2019, in January and February bought nearly 25,000 passengers into Boston, that's on the Boston Town Service. In January, February of this year, we brought 12,500. It's huge. The drop's massive. Not only that, when you look at the town service and you look what people want a town service for, it's not fit for purpose. It goes to the same area that it's gone to for the past 20 years. When it needs to go to the school, it needs to go to the hospital, it needs to go to the industrial estates, both of them. And it needs to go up to Aldreds and downtown, it needs to go where people want it to go. But to do that will cost a huge amount of money that as a commercial enterprise, we simply don't have. We don't have that level of investment, which is why our buses are older than everybody else. We run what we can afford to run. We're from Yorkshire originally, so if you can't afford it, you can't have it. So where we are with Boston Town Service is that I put, last July actually, and the year before, I put a proposal into Lincolnshire County Council to put in what we call a daisy chain town service, which is a hop-on, hop-off service. I did the same for Spalding. I asked for it under the BSIP funding, because there's multiple millions gone in in BSIP funding. Boston Town today is supported by £400 a day. It's nowhere near enough, because it takes three buses and four drivers from seven in the morning, but remember, they start at 6.30, through to 7.30 at night, which means that they all finish at eight o'clock at night, to run Boston Town Service as it stands. Spalding has just been supported by £980 a day. Gainsborough's just gone to every 15 minutes under BSIP funding. Grantham's just gone to every 15 minutes under BSIP funding. I have been told there is no money for Boston. It's indicative. I mean, we carry 1.3 million people a year and we're currently running 1.9 million kilometres a year. Proportionally, 80% of that is commercial. We're doing it, we're working really hard. But what makes it really difficult is when I go into the enhanced partnership meetings and I'm banging the drum for Boston, I'm banging the drum for East Lindsay, I'm banging the drum for South Holland, and they can't see the recognition within Boston Town itself for what we're trying to do. Man knows this because I have, in no uncertain terms, noted my displeasure. When I look at the town deal and the amount of funding coming in on the town deal, I look at Rosegarth Square, 18.4 million. I look at the £3 million that's gone to the train station owned by Network Rail and there isn't a decent seat in the bus station. 700,000 passenger journeys through that bus station every year and there isn't, well, there's one seat for people to sit on. So it's difficult. You know, I did want to come in and talk today because I don't want people to think that we just cancelled things, we don't. There are multiple reasons why we pulled out of the town centre. Not least risk, not least that we couldn't get through to the other side, not least the bad press that we were getting in terms of the disgruntlement of people with us going through the middle. And yes, we have been lobbied by the town council to come out of there to engage markets, more markets, to be able to have people sitting on the streets, to have cafes and terraces. We would do that because we want Boston to be better. But we need your support to make your public transport better, because I can't do it on my own. So that's why I wanted to come and talk to you. Do you have any questions for me?
Let's see, who's got some questions for us then? Just raise your hands and we can just do it in order. Councillor Gilbert.
Mentioned the fact that other bus companies get subsidies and Bryline doesn't. And that, obviously, that was quite shocking for me to hear that, and I'm sure for other members of this committee as well. Which other bus companies are there that are the beneficiaries of these subsidies that you're not able to get? I mean...
Are you talking about BSIP funding?
Yeah.
So we do get BSIP funding on the Lincoln service. So the Lincoln service is what we call an IC service. And part of the BSIP Bus Service Improvement Plan, the money that came in, I have a copy of the updated BSIP, I'm happy to send it to everybody. The BSIP funding had a set of criteria against it and it's driven through what we call the Enhanced Partnership Agreement. And the Enhanced Partnership Agreement, the primary operators in Lincolnshire, which is ourselves, Stagecoach, Delanes, Centrebus, PC Coaches in Lincoln, because they're half and half with bus and coach. So the primary beneficiaries of this BSIP funding has been on the IC services, the interconnect services, and the primary operator of the interconnect services is of course Stagecoach. Now, Stagecoach is a national company owned by the German banks, so, and again, I'm not bothered that this is being taped. They can pull funding down and then disseminate both fleet and funding to different areas. We're local, we're your local bus company, it's just us. We can't do that, we can't pull down on the national level, we certainly don't have the ability. I mean, I'm the MD, I've got a team of three, four that support me and I've got 70 staff. I'm tired. It's actually my 55th birthday today.
Oh.
And here I am.
We're learning, we're going to bake you a cake.
Fantastic. My husband's quite literally, what are you doing? But it's important, you know, you're having your meeting tonight, it's important I come and talk to you. So I won't say that it's just Stagecoach that's getting the funding. It's the areas, more importantly, that are getting the funding. And I think that's what you need to look at as a Boston area town council. For example, you will know that we pulled out of some of the villages on what we call our B7 route, which is also the Stagecoach 57 route. So that is probably one of the few commercial corridors in Lincolnshire. We've been operating on that route for over 25 years now, before Stagecoach bought Lincolnshire Roadcar. We asked, because we serve the villages and Stagecoach goes straight up and down the main road, we asked for £12.75 per trip to go in and serve the villagers. Lincolnshire County Council said no. But that's, again, it's indicative. However, Stagecoach are paid to operate in the morning up until nine o'clock and they're paid to operate after four o'clock at peak period, including education transport. So I'm fighting a losing battle, not just because of the relationship, but I would say because of the strategy. And then you need to understand, it gets deeper, you need to go into the strategy of Lincolnshire County Council for its public transport network. So three and a half million a year goes to Call Connect. We don't get that for, well, they are under BSIP, but obviously we're not seeing it. Three and a half million goes to Call Connect. If I want to expand the town service, I can't because of the money that they're putting into Call Connect, which is fully paid for by the taxpayer in Boston. So it's complex.
Do you want to ask another question or are you happy with the response?
Yeah, I just, I mean, it sounds like an incredibly complicated picture and for someone who's not sort of thought about too much about, about transport in Boston over the years, I struggle to sort of make complete sense of it.
You will.
But I get, but I get a very good picture that we're being denied the resources that others are benefiting from. And I just wonder whether it's the number of passengers that's the issue, it's the, I presume, intercity connecting services that are ones that get the subsidy. You mentioned just very briefly that almost the number of passengers has halved over the last...
On Boston Town.
Yeah, on Boston Town. Have you, have you any explanation for why that might have occurred?
I think there's a number of reasons. One, again, I'll go back to what is in the town centre for people to come to. Two, we have a huge drop in concessionary. They don't want to come into the town centre. You have some, you still do, because it's what they do, they have places that they go to. That's absolutely fine, I understand that. Plus, you've got some of the doctor surgeries in the centre of the town, that's what they come in for. But you also do have the issue in the town centre. What is there for people? If you look at the older people, they don't, they really don't, they don't come in here. They may come in on a Wednesday or on market days on Saturdays. But that is the primary reason.
Right on point. We have to find some way of helping you because, you know, all the indications are that this is shaping up to be a kind of an existential crisis for the town, with a number of elements to it, of which transport is one.
We all know, transport is one of the five socio-economic pillars of growth in any successful town, city environment. It is not considered in Boston. Look at the highways, look at, look at what we've got in terms of highways. This year alone, and again, it's a huge cost, in terms of peak period, I had to add, God, I haven't even had a drink yet, had to add an extra 25 minutes onto the timetable to get through Boston in the morning to get the children to school. You start adding that up over 190 days a year, it's huge. And there's no reimbursement for it, it is what it is.
Okay. Thank you very much there, Mike. Anyone else like to ask any questions? Councillor Dorian. Go on.
Yeah, I've got to know, a bit like you, mate, I didn't have much reason to really understand the transport network as it pertains to public transport, because I live very close to the town centre and I use the car. But what you've shared with me, Marianne, has been absolutely, well, devastating at times, very enlightening other times. And I think it's just another example of this town and its residents being really badly served by Lincolnshire County Council, because they are in control of this BSIP funding that you shared with us and they have the authority to disperse that money to whichever town they wish to disperse it to. And quite clearly, they have chosen, because it is a political choice, isn't it? They've chosen not to serve the residents of Boston well enough and I'm appalled at that. I'm appalled that you've not had the political support from our Boston County councillors. And I think people should take note of that when they go to the polling booth, Mr. Chair, in a few weeks' time. Because we need people who are going to speak up for Boston. Thanks to the relationship that we have developed in the last two years, I think we've worked really well together in terms of helping each other. And one of the things that I am sorry for and will apologise for is the state of the bus station. Because I agree with you, it's not up to standard. It should and can be better and it will be better. I have asked officers to look at how we can best bring some attention to the bus station to make it fit for purpose for our residents. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to mention that when we had our visitor at the last meeting, she had submitted a letter to this committee that none of us received because it was submitted to one councillor, councillor Danny, who didn't distribute it as was requested in the letter. I've now met with that resident. Neither, I believe, even though councillor Danny said that he had taken upon himself to contact you, you hadn't received any contact from him. So I think the record should be corrected this evening, because you can't play fast and loose with people's communications. If somebody sends me a letter, I want to receive it, Mr. Chairman. I don't want somebody else deciding what to do with it on my behalf. But thank you again for coming in tonight and I look forward to working with you in the future.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that I'm actually enlightened about the transport situation, because I was never clear. I mean, I've seen your buses and I've watched your buses, I've used them occasionally, not very often, I have, live it or not, I've got a pass, it's okay.
Please use it. Please use it.
But next time, after pay. So I'd like to take this further. We can't do all these things this evening, but I'd like to meet you and some of these councillors here tonight on a separate meeting where we can get down to some real nitty-gritties. Because we haven't got a, can't spend all night doing this to this committee. But what I'd like to do, I think there's a lot of people around this table now who are concerned about what we've heard. And we didn't know this before and I've not known this before, but I would like to take up the offer of having a meeting with you, with those who want to do it around this table, and then we're going to see what we can do to help you, because you're a family business, you're a local business and I think this, this town depends on you. And I think to hear that the numbers have halved is actually not good, in my view. We should be doubling them, not halving them. And we want this town to thrive and the transport system has to work to make this town thrive. And at the moment, you're not giving that support and that's not good enough, in my view. So we would like to take that offer up of meeting you and we would like to do that at a separate meeting. But before we do move on, does anybody else want to ask any more questions of Marianne White's coming? Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I would like to clarify is that the Fen Side residents, especially the elderly and the disabled one, they weren't happy about the bus not going through the town, because before they used to get the bus by, I think, Next and go through the town and they go home. Now it's hard for them to get off by boots and then walk all the way, if they go like to Tony Street Surgery or go to Leder to do some shopping or other side, you know, on the other side of the town, that was the issue, that's the thing. And some of them expressed themselves that they weren't happy because they weren't consulted on that matter. The second thing, I totally agree with you, I think to build a good economy, you need to have a good infrastructure and I think transport is very vital to it. If you want to have a successful, I think, economy, you need to have the accurate buses. Three weeks ago, I was in the county and I did mention that to even the county, because I don't think so we have a good net of buses around the county itself. I think Call Connect, there is people who complain about it and I was shocked to hear that this 3.5 million goes to them. People that are not happy because they have to pick them by certain times and drop them by certain times, so they don't have enough time. And I was as well astonished about £400 a day that you get, which is around £140,000 a year, I think, similar to that on the county. Yeah, so these issues could be addressed and I can assure you that I will mention them to the county. And we have to fight for better, I think, transport links around Boston, because I think Boston has a lot to offer. I will not disagree with you that there is not much to see in Boston, however, there is if there is the right transport to bring people in. And I can give you an example, they are building, I think they are renewing the museum in Lincoln. However, my question for that, I say, if I'm a father with two kids, I know why, four of us, and I would like to come and visit the Lincoln Museum on Sunday, how will I get there? If you take the train, usually it's delayed in Sliford because you have to change. You cannot take a taxi, which is, will be like £120 probably for each way, so how we can get there? So I think the county has to pick itself and create the networks necessary for this county. If not, they're going to kill most of the towns, because the transport, as I say, is very vital for us.
I'm going to stop you there, because I think you've gone on too far about that. One thing you haven't had is the support of the local county councils in this area, full stop. You've not had that. And mentioning one thing to the county council is one thing, putting pressure on it is another. And what you need is pressure, not mentionings, all right? And we will then make sure, collectively as a group, that we will put some pressure on the county council, not mention stuff, because a mentioning will go in one ear and out the other. And I think you deserve a better treatment than you've had over the years, simple as that. Councillor Gleeson.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you. Again, I wasn't aware of the situation. The last time, I think, many years ago, we had someone from Bryline in and then, I know you were having troubles then even, so I think, haven't got, was it you yet? I think it is important now that we do hold county to account for this, because this is outside of our control to a large extent. Although I am happy in my role of chair of scrutiny to actually bring this matter in, we can actually call county in and ask what they're doing. I will, I'm happy to do that part of it. But my big worry is obviously we've got this big change in our structure, where we're going to lose our district councils. And if we're not in a stronger position before then, with things in place whereby, you know, these things are secure within the town, we are going to struggle even more. So I think this must be now priority for us. I'm glad, really pleased you brought this to our attention, because I think it is something we need to ensure that, you know, we have a stronger voice than we can at county. And we are, you know, calling them to account and making sure the new structures recognise Boston's need, because we've got this long history of basically the town not getting its fair share from county and that seems to be continuing.
I agree with that, Councillor Gleeson. I think first of all, the meeting with Marianne first, to get all the facts and figures, so we all are up to date with what's going on, and then the overview scrutiny can then go, do its job. And I agree with you entirely, so it's a two-stage attack, all right? We have a meeting with us first and then Paul Gleeson is the chairman of the scrutiny committee, he can then call them in and we can go from there.
Be commercially open with you.
Good.
Because it has to be transparent. I won't just give you one side of it. I will be commercially transparent with you, so there is nothing that you won't know.
I've listened to you tonight and I tell you what, you've spoken from the heart and I think whatever you're going to tell us, I will believe you, because I think you're that sort of person, so don't worry, you will be that sort of person, don't worry, I know that.
Thank you.
Councillor Azard.
Good evening and thank you for that presentation and helping us to understand the pressures that you're under in that sense of the word. the pressures that you're under in that sense of the word. Um, obviously, as councillors, as all councillors, we get our residents often complaining that the lack of bus services stop them coming into town. And it's a kind of vicious circle, isn't it, about cost of supply in the bus against how many coming in. But your explanation tonight helps with that argument. When I take it back to the local residents in Wytham Ward, which is what I serve, where there is very little, uh, in bus service at all. There's a couple of things. Obviously, I'm, I'm sometimes I'm amazed by how many times I tell people that it only costs £3 to go from Boston to Lincoln. And I, I kind of hope that in some ways, your advertising campaign can increase a little bit because there's a lot of people that don't realise, hi there, that don't realise that I, I share it on social media. Obviously, it was £2, but Labour Party have put it up by 50% to £3. But it's still really good value, um, to, to operate a, a bus service from Boston all the way to Lincoln or to Skegness for £3. And I think we need to encourage that and that would help with footfall onto your services. There's one question, and I'm not too sure what the answer is now, but I do remember legislation going through Parliament some time ago about making bus companies go to electric buses. Are you under any pressure for that at all?
It's like Scotch, mist and Irish fog, isn't it? So it's, the, the bus service industry is one of the most legislate, legislated industries in this country in terms of what we have to do, the rules and regulations we have to follow. There is a huge shift towards carbon neutrality, as, as much as they, as they possibly can. Now, this works on high footfall corridors where you are carrying 20,000 people a day, TFL Manchester. This is where they're looking at the areas of franchising because you, you have the capacity with it. A new electric bus, single-decker, is circa £400,000. Not only that, you have to have the infrastructure to be able to operate it. Lincolnshire's not going to have that infrastructure for another 10 years. So they can beat the drum all they like unless we start getting 20,000 people a day on and the infrastructure to support it. We're going to remain on, I mean, all our, basically Euro six now with a couple of ones at the bottom. I'm trying to bin. Um, Euro six. And, and that's, that's where we'll be. You know, with this talk about hydrogen. But again, those buses are £450,000 each. I, I don't have the revenue. The big groups do. The, the likes of Stagecoach and First Bus and Ariva, which is where the government are funneling everything towards with franchising and all the key corridors. That there aren't going to be, I don't think, independent bus companies in the next 10 years. They will batter them out of existence through legislation. So, so it is, it is what it is. It's not, you're not going to get electric buses in Boston unless of course Boston Town Council can provide electric charging points and Lincolnshire County Council are prepared to pay for them. So I'd love to.
Any other question, Paul? You happy with that? The answer? Yeah. Any other questions before we move on?
Oh, can I just say, I did bid for electric buses in the zebra scheme and I put Boston forward as a town to have electric buses. But, um, I don't know if Lincolnshire County Council put it forward as their bid. I think Grantham was put forward for their electric bus town.
Thank you. Councillor Walif.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Well, I was very, very impressed with, uh, um, the explanations tonight and the information we received. Um, we had a bus service running around, uh, One Road and, um, I don't even have that went. And I did challenge, um, Lincolnshire County Council over it. And they said, well, we haven't got any money for it. So that's why that disappeared really. Um, there are no bus services really, apart from the one that runs down Sleaford Road. There are no bus services in Mindboard entirely now, apart from that. And it's a parade.
Pardon? You're at Welland.
Welland Road.
The one that comes.
It ran down South Parade and along Welland Road and out. Now, that, um, I think it, maybe there's one or two services down there now, but I understood that most have been withdrawn. I think that, um, the cost of, perhaps weren't enough passengers, I don't know.
It has. Total lack of passengers. And then you're starting to look at the timing of getting through Boston. So the number of passengers that you actually collect in a certain space compared to the time that it costs to get through there, to then try and get through Boston, because it's commercial.
Yeah.
You can't associate. I think they gave us along the lines of, I don't know, £1.50 a trip to go along Welland Road. It, again, can't do it. I mean, what, what you also have to understand is the section 106 money in Boston. As a town council, you should be asking where it's going. I don't think I've seen a penny of section 106 towards public transport. And there are huge amounts of developments, you know, Frampton Gate and, uh, along the, the back over the other side of, um, Boston. My brain's gone to goo because I'm old.
Well, there's, um, but, but. The Ashen Hall Drive area. And, um, of course, there's the, um, area behind Boston West School, which is.
Correct. So, so Lincolnshire County Council are supposed to lobby for section 106 funding?
Well, that would come to Boscombe Borough Council, the section 106 funding for that.
But are they lobbying for it in terms of public transport?
I don't know. You have to ask Boscombe Borough Council that.
Through you, Chair. No, well, you said on planning as well as me, Stephen. No, in my experience, the, the 106 monies that the county requests are usually for education.
Except for public transport.
And the health service bid for 106 monies. But I've never sat on an application where they've asked for transport monies, have you? No? So.
That's where it comes from.
So there you go. Another way that we're being failed. And actually, I don't ever remember a county councillor bringing that up at planning.
I don't know either. No. Can I move on? I'll just briefly.
Do you want to carry on? You say another question?
Um, yes, what was I coming? I was going to mention the fact, the railway station. The railway station is the bane of my life. When, um, it was when, when we had the big meeting at, well, you're on there, of course, at the, um, football ground to decide what we're going to do. Um, and the plan was to spend 2.4 million pounds, I think, on improving Boston Railway Station to make it habitable apparently. And I think many of us at the time thought that 2.4 million pounds would be better spent on the bus station. But we weren't, but the previous administration wouldn't allow us to do that because they'd already decided behind closed doors what they were going to do. So, um, that went. But I, I, I do think that 2.4 million pounds on a, on a railway station just to make it habitable is rather all the money.
I'm going to sum up now. I think we've all got the clear picture that we're not getting the funding from the county council, we should expect. Um, we've got a business here that wants to develop and help this town and it's not getting the support. Um, and I believe now it's the time for us to get around the table with Marianne, uh, get all the facts and figures out, all the information we need to know. And then, then we can have a, a meeting. Then we can pass it over for Paul's, uh, Councillor Gleeson's to, you know, scrutiny committee to call county council in. And I think that's a stage that we need to go through. Can I say to you, thank you for coming this evening? And can I reassure you that this, these councillors around this table tonight are with you, going to support you? I'm not going to mention something. We're going to pressurise people to give you the help that you need for your company to provide the services that the Boston people deserve and well need. All right? Can I thank you very much for coming along? We won't let you sit there and not listen to us because it will drive you nuts. You're going to have your birthday now and I, and go for dinner. Happy birthday to you. And you look 21 again. Well done. And thank you for coming along. Do appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing you again soon. All right. Thank you. So, and any, any questions from the members of the, uh, of the public?
There are, there are none, Chair.
No questions. Thank you very much. And anybody in the gallery want to speak at all? Like to address it? No? Okay. Thank you, Marianne. So if you're any home, thank you. Right. So we're going to move on then now to, um, that concludes the preliminaries. We'll now move to part two of the agenda. And the agenda items are, and I'll call upon, um, Duncan to talk about Central Park security. Over to you, Duncan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you've asked me this evening just to give you an overview of where we actually are, I think, um, in regarding the, let's boil it down to, to, to the business of opening and closing of Central Park. And I'm particularly keen to see councillor Isard, who is our biggest acolyte and informant, um, in the room this evening. Effectively, in a precis, um, I think BTAC have supported, um, security arrangements of the opening and closing for the last four years at Central Park. That's been provided by a company called Logic Services. Um, their contract with us expires in September this year. I think councillor Isard will attest to the fact that that, over latter years, their services have perhaps not been 100%. In fact, they've not been anywhere close to 100% on occasions. There's been a failure to open and close some of the gates on a number of occasions. Um, what I've done is I've spoken and liaised with colleagues from Lincolnshire Police just to try and get some idea of, um, direction to take and to come and give you this ver- verbal briefing. Um, so I've asked Lincolnshire Police, uh, what incidents have been recorded in Central Park in the last three quarters of this year? So up until, so from the 1st of the 3rd, 24, until the 15th of the 1st, 25. And they've given me a, a list of incidents, um, that have occurred. And I wasn't interested in those within the daylight and when the park was open specifically for this particular agenda. It was more important to try and find out what has occurred when the park has been closed. So they gave me the answer and I queried it and sent it back to their statistics. And the, the, the police inspector, Ian Cotton, also lent his weight to that. And he came back to me. And I was amazed to find that they have no recorded incidents between those dates. None whatsoever. Now, whether the car, or whether the park has been closed, or whether the park has been open, that is a matter of conjecture or fact when, when you've kindly sent information or whatever else. But in actual fact, there have been no incidents. So you have to bring into question the value of the opening and closing of Central Park, given the fact that people do break into it, people cut the railings, right? And this committee are funding that to the sum of £18,000 a year. My recommendation to the committee is that we run this contract to the end, to September, and we try and limp it along as best we can. I met with them today. We're meeting with them every month at the end of the contract to try and exert that pressure, to wring the value for money out on your behalf. Right? But my suggestion is when that contract comes to an end, we let it naturally wither and die. And then, if necessary, revisit that if we receive further representations from colleagues from Lincolnshire Police. Because I don't think I can ever justify that being best value for money for this committee. I'm happy to take questions on that basis.
Thank you very much, Duncan. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. I think to, to try and do anything between now and September is a waste of time and money and effort. Um, I think we've got to monitor it, like you said. And I think then we need to review it between now and September to see how we're going to go forward from there. Um, but clearly, um, you know, to, to try and stop them and try and get money back off them and it's a waste of time and effort. So I tend to agree with you. Are there any questions for, for Duncan? Councillor Isard.
Hi there. Yeah, thanks for that. Um, I, I agree with you. I mean, I have a couple of residents along Turnard Street and that, that, um, have raised issues about the children after dark, still using the skateboard, still using the basketball court and making noise. But it's low kind of antisocial behaviour noise. Um, there's, for my, from, as a wall councillor, I've not had any kind of serious reports of any kind of parties or drug taking or whatever. And as you say, I remember sitting back at BTAC, there were so many entrance points to that park. If people want to get into the park, it's very easy to climb over the fencing or break the fencing. And that means we have extra repairs. So I am totally agreeing with you as far as this contract's not working. I can walk past there anytime and find the gates open. I've sent many a photograph, as you know. Um, so I agree that I think it's best that we save the money and, and don't redo it. My only concern, of course, is once the younger people of, of Boston find that the park gates are open, they might then start grouping there. So I think what we need to do is talk to the local police. And I know it's difficult for them because of the, the restrictions they've got. But they might need to do A Patrol now and again when we can. Certainly, I've got a couple of residents that can keep a visual check and to see how things are going on. I can understand it's, it might be a little bit frustrating at eight o'clock on a winter's night to hear the basketball courts. And of course, you know, it's not just the ball hitting the courts, it's the screaming and the shouting that goes with celebrating a goal or whatever. Um, but it is really low. And she's not reported it to the police. So there isn't any kind of, uh, of reason. She's just email me, but she doesn't want to make a formal complaint about it. So yeah, I agree with you. Let's, um, limp this contract as best we can. I don't expect them to improve their level of services to us, uh, and let it run. And then monitor it. And that's all we can do is monitor it. Because obviously, we don't want the situation where the children's playground gets damaged because people think now it's open all the time. They can go in there at midnight and start any kind of damage. We, we have to closely monitor that. We might need some more lighting up there just to stop people in that park area. Um, possibly if it's, if it's under illumination, they likely to be in that children's playground area. Some think we could look at the cost saving on, on saving locking of the park to whether we can have additional lights brought in. But let's just monitor it and see how it goes. Because to me, even if we did find another company that did lock the gates on time, if people want to access that park for reasons of trouble, they can certainly do that. Many of the locations dotted around.
Thank you very much, Councillor Isard, for that, uh, observation and, uh, your, your notes, Councillor Duncan.
If it assists as, as part of a preemptive strike, if it were, is I've asked colleagues in procurement just to make some initial inquiries as to how much it would cost now to enter into a new contract to provide the same opening and closing facilities. The closest I've got this year, should we choose to open those negotiations, is £44,000 a year.
And the thing is, is it 44,000 versus 18,000 in repairs and damage? That's, that's, that's the question, isn't it?
It's something that we can look at. The one thing I would say is that I'm in relative virtual weekly contact with my colleagues from the antisocial behaviour team. Um, they're aware of that I'm coming here this evening. I've spoken to other colleagues as well. So I think we'll be eminently able to manage expectations and, and look at seeing outcomes post-contract. If it becomes such a significant problem that, that this committee feels the necessity to throw significant amount of money at it, then so be it. But actually, I, I think what we just need to do is to let it come to a natural end and then see where it goes from there.
Okay. I've got some more questions. Councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Um, thanks for your report, Duncan. Um, uh, I think it's, I, I find it incredulous, and I'm not an expert in contract management, Chair, but the last administration entered into this contract seemingly without any, um, penalties for failing to do the very task that the contract was awarded for. And I find that eminently frustrating. Um, so, and they paid it upfront. So we can't withhold any monies because they're not complying with the contract. So there's no break clause because we've just said, here's a shed load of money.
I can break it, but take the money and then have to do nothing for it. Rather, they are compelled to do.
Yeah, yeah. So that was the previous administration who did that. Just let's be clear about that, please. Um, whilst I have sympathy with, uh, councillor Isard's residents, um, I, I want to bring an element of fairness to the discussion, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so for instance, myself, councillor Gleeson and councillor Drayton, we have, uh, Burgess Pit, we have, uh, Welly Park in our patches and none of them get locked at night. Um, I don't believe there are any other parks in the borough that get locked at night. Um, and they are, uh, used by members of the public, uh, through the hours of daylight and the hours of darkness. Um, so this committee would be spending money in one part of the borough and not committing it to another part of the borough. So there is a fairness argument here. I'm going to argue against that now. I used to be in the debating society, which, you know. Um, the, the, the opposite side of the argument is, well, the Central Park is the jewel in our crown, if you will, of public spaces. It is, you know, a, a sanctuary for many people. And, um, you know, people still remember it when we had beautiful roseb- It is, you know, a sanctuary for many people and, you know, people still remember it when we had beautiful rose beds in there and we had a proper park keeper who wore a cap and, and knew his dog walking residents by name. So, you know, those halcyon days sadly have gone, but that's not to say we don't want to preserve the park and keep it looking beautiful. However, all I'm raising, Mr Chair, is there are other areas of the borough that don't get protected by lock gates and we need to bear that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dorian. Councilor Goldblum.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for your report. I'm, I'm just, I'm just reminded that prior to the, the contract being issued to lock the gates, there was an awful lot of noise on social media. And I think the last administration responded to that noise by establishing this contract, a contract which clearly has failed to deliver what we as a council would expect it to deliver in the, in the variability of the service that we're getting and our inability to actually hold anyone to account for that. But also from memory, I seem to, to remember that there were two elements to the, 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 the noise on social media. One issue was the young people in the park making noise and affecting people's quality of life who lived on Tawney Street. The other issue was people who we might call normal people, average people, walking through the park and being intimidated by other people who are also in the park. And that seemed to be a sort of a, a second dimension to the debate about what we need to do to en- ensure people felt safe. So by locking the gates, not only did you lock the younger people out and the people who might be slightly intimidating, but also you locked out slightly intimidated people as well. So we did see a very rapid decline in any sort of complaints and feelings of unhappiness about, about the situation with the park. So all I would say is I think we've just got to go cautiously with this. I mean, forty four thousand pounds is an awful lot of money simply to lock some gates, you know, for, for a period of twelve months. But on the other hand, you know, we, we have had that noise on social media and we have got those issues that if we leave the gates open, people will, or people may start to wander through the park and immediately start to get anxious and then start contacting the police or contacting the council. So I, I'm very much in favour of your recommendation. I think it's, it's absolutely the right, the right option. But we just need to keep an open mind as to what course of action we might have to take in the future.
Thank you Chair. That is my recommendation, I think. And thank you very much indeed, members, for being so supportive. I think what we all need to remember as well is actually this matter is a lead for the police. You know, the police really need to dictate the pace and response in respect of this. This particular committee is, is merely trying its very best to be helpful. But the police assure me that this is a matter of high priority and that would perhaps appear to be vindicated by the fact of the numbers that they've given to me. So thank you Chair, thank you members.
Yeah, I've got a couple of more questions for you before you go. Councilor Gleeson and then Councilor Woodliffe.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I, I think there must be slightly more intelligent ways of approaching some of these, these issues. I, I think sort of this spending a putative forty thousand pounds on locking the gate is, is not the way forward. So I, what the officer said is right. We obviously let this rather peculiar contract the previous administration left run its course. And then we see what issues arrive and see how we can then intelligently buy maybe better lighting in some areas, CCTV and so on. And, and, you know, make it somewhere where people still can use for part of the night and things. I think that ties in with our green flag work as well. So I think, yeah, that I think what the officer's saying makes sense. I think we should support it. And then we, you know, maybe use some of the money we're then not spending on intelligent redesigning parts of the park, you know, to make it more friendly to people.
That's a great idea there. I think we should put that on the work programme to a brainstorming session about, I mean, Council Drayton here has written down a loudspeaker system or, you know, spotlights that light up at night time or CCTV system. So we can't discuss that tonight in detail. What I'd like to do is put that on the work programme so that we can have another session between now and September to have a chat about that as a, as a work, a work situation. And it's a bit of a brainstorming session. I think it's a good idea. Go into Councilor Woodliffe.
Thank you Chairman. As I understood it actually, don't we lock the gates at Garfit Park, or we used to? Do we cancel that? Were they golden gates that we used to cut them? The golden scissors used to cut the grass. Oh, sorry, I made them. We don't now. And the only caution about this really is of course, remember the police service is going to be cut back very severely in Lincolnshire. So reliance on the police, they may not be able to deliver quite the service that we would like. So, you know, lots of two hundred officers will have an impact around here if it goes through. So you have to bear that in mind. They may not be able to support us in quite the way that we would like. Thank you Chairman.
And noted, thank you very much. Councilor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. All I would like to say, because you talk about crime for the last few days, especially like yesterday, I found two of our officers patrolling the park and that's my stop people, you know, misbehaving. So it looks nice. And I seen the police also, you know, walking through the park, which is that's probably why there is less incident. The only thing which is, I would like to probably talk about is in the summer, the days are longer. So we have to think carefully what will happen because it's all residential area from both sides. So we have to think about that. And then probably we should come up with some idea how to deal with it because it will cause them a lot of, I think, noise and probably the kids will be misbehaving, but that's kids, but probably after midnight. That's the only thing which is I would probably suggest to look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, that's all going on the work programme. So I thank you all for that questions on that one. Duncan, thank you very much for your report. You can shoot off now if you like. And keep up. Happy birthday to you then. Move on. Thank you very much. That, I think we've got the gist of all that and I think we're all in agreement that we let the, the, the contract run its course till September and then we'll look at it between now and then as a work programme for the, all right. Thank you very much. Let's go on to the financial position on item two now, is that the thirty first of December? And I'd like to start on page nine of the agenda and ask Carl to present the details to you.
Thank you Chairman.
Item two.
Okay, so this is the forecast for the financial year twenty four five as at quarter three. So the forecast position is an overspend of sixteen thousand pounds, which contrasts against what we were expecting in Q two of forty nine thousand pounds. This is a favourable movement of thirty three thousand pounds. And primarily as a result of the work that the Chair has commissioned and the Assistant Director of Culture and Leisure has supported. And the finance team have gone out and reviewed the recharges made for services under this account and identified thirty thousand pounds worth of savings that can be applied at this point in the year. As we are rapidly, very rapidly approaching the end of the financial year, that position will be ratified and reported to you at the next meeting. If you go on to the detail in appendix A. So whilst we have those significant savings that have been identified and applied in this table, we have one or two areas of increased spend. Primarily on page thirteen, we have the maintenance of new play equipment, annual inspection costs are higher than the budget. That has moved since Q two by eight hundred pounds. Move on to page fourteen. Many of the services where we have the heading of support services, this is where these savings have been identified and incorporated into the tables. So the top of this page, under allotments, we've got support services and you'll see there the variance column, management administration support, fourteen hundred and eighty four pounds a reduction. So that's the theme right throughout all of these pages here. Each and every service has been reviewed and we've been able to confirm, verify that these services can be reduced. When I say services reduced, I mean the charges for these services are more scientifically updated now. We just, on the previous item, we mentioned the gate locking service. So on page fourteen there, if you haven't spotted it already, under Central Park, we've got the gate locking service. There is a budget of seventeen thousand pounds there. The actual spend to the end of December was twenty three thousand pounds. As accountants, what we do is we appreciate that some of that charge will relate to future year. So as Duncan just referred, the contract runs through to September. As the chairman referred, we do pay upfront for that service. So an element of that twenty three thousand pound has been carried forward to the next financial year. Good accounting practice to do that. But on the basis of that previous decision, we're indicating that there'll be an eighteen thousand pound removal of spend from next year's budget, twenty five, twenty six. So again, you will see that when we report the quarter one position, twenty five, twenty six. And then the only other, I'm sorry, there are a couple more areas I just want to draw your attention to. Page seventeen, the electricity under town centre, town centre maintenance. No budget for it. But we are forecasting a spend of nineteen hundred pounds for the period. So that's an, an increase that we are accounting for. And then on the final page, page eighteen, under administration, we have different to Q two, we've got eleven thousand pounds worth of EHC grants. That's the Empowering Healthy Communities Grants that the committee agreed to fund and that comes out of your reserves. So perfectly normal. And then what we have on the bottom line of that page, we have a deficit showing of sixteen thousand pounds, sixteen thousand and seventy nine pounds, I should say specifically. And that's an improvement of thirty three thousand pounds to what we were reporting at Q two. And it's an improvement of twenty thousand pounds compared to what the budget position was when we set this budget for twenty four, twenty five. So what that means is the reliance on your reserves is much reduced, greatly reduced. So at the start of twenty four, twenty five, your reserves were standing at two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eleven pounds. We've got some reserve movements. So we're using those reserves for the grants, as I mentioned. We also need to balance this budget with the sixteen thousand pounds. So we are forecasting at the end of the period, the financial period, thirty first of March, twenty twenty five, that you will have a hundred and seventy three thousand pounds. This is all forecast and estimates, as scientifically as we can be at that point in time. So it may move still when we get to the end of the financial year. But it's a strong indication of where you are and it's a significant improvement compared to where we were in Q two. Can I take any questions please?
Before you take any questions, I'd just like to add to your report because obviously I spent a lot of time with, with Phil Perry. We had all the officers in here, all the different operations that serve BTAC. And now rest assured, we went through everything line by line. I questioned everything. And I screwed everything down as best I could on all the things that we were being charged for or, you know, things we weren't being charged for or, and things that we were supposed to be charged for and we weren't getting the service for. So the, the savings has come about by going a complete review of everything line by line, all the different operations. I have to say that Carl's team, that Carolyn, Caroline, the two ladies that were working with us were excellent from P S P S. They worked very, very well. They were on our side and they highlighted things that I wasn't aware of. And clearly, between all of us, we managed to do all those savings. It's been quite an eye opener and it gives you a better understanding of what BTAC actually does and how it's serviced and how the costs are arrived at. And obviously, even when we talk about the toilets attendance, that there was the cost of that, those three gentlemen came and sat in that area with me for two hours. I, I, I asked them lots of questions. I asked them how they worked, I asked them how they charge out their pleading materials and how they recorded all the stuff from the stockroom and that sort of thing. So I, I was really, really very thorough with everybody. And I have to say that everybody was very cooperative, weren't they Phil, to be fair? And they answered all the difficult questions and they were difficult questions because I'm not an easy person to sit there and let them get away with it. So I was very pleased how it went. I was very pleased with the, the cooperation, very pleased with team, Carl's team and his ladies. I'm pleased with Phil for all the things that we've gone through. We have still got one more meeting to, to do in April. But that, it goes to show that what can be done. And I think it needed to be done because it's a long time while we just kept looking at numbers and figures that didn't mean anything and weren't going anywhere. And I'm quite pleased that we managed to achieve what we achieved out of all that work. It did take some time to go through it all. So thank you very much for that. So we will ask questions now then. So who's the first one on there? Councilor Gleeson, off to go, off, off to go.
Thank you. Firstly, actually, before the question bit, I, I think as a committed, we must thank the Chair for and Phil Perry for all the hard work they put in. Because this isn't only a thirty odd thousand pound saving this year, it's a thirty odd thousand pound saving next year and the subsequent year and hopefully for the new town council in the future. So that will very quickly build up, but which leads on to my slightly cheeky question though is, is there any money due us back for previous years? Because, you know, if we've been not receiving the full services, then surely we're, we're owed a few thirty thousand quid, which should help get rid of our sixteen thousand pound debt, surely.
You'd be surprised, Carl, to these sort of things that we were being charged for, that we never even seen or.
But I'm, I'm doing it slightly flippantly, but it's a genuine question that, you know, we, we've overpaid this year or we were overcharged, whatever you want to call it. Things were awry. Well, surely they were equally awry in previous years, going back to the golden scissors in Garfit's Lane. So I do think there's an argument for us asking for at least our sixteen grand writing off this year, if not more. Thank you.
Don't think that's a question for Carl to answer because I don't, I don't think Carl was, Carl was involved in all that in those years gone by. But I know what you're saying. Let's record that and make a note of what to, or we'll take it further up the chain. All right. Councilor Dorian.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I concur with Councilor Gleeson. Now I know why Councilor Gosh isn't here. He didn't want to answer that question. Yes, I think you did a, a, a wonderful piece of work there Chair. And, you know, you really drilled down into the nuts and bolts of the budget and I know you spent a lot of time doing it. At the time, Council Point did commend yourself, Carl, and your officers to me, Carolyn and Carol, was it? So would you please pass on my thanks? At the time, I got full chapter and verse and Council Point was very impressed with the work of your officers and the, the commitment to the task. So thank you very much. I'm very grateful.
Councilor Woodliffe.
Thanks Chairman. Anglia Water and the toilets in the park, they overcharged us some time ago, didn't they? Well, I think they did anyway. And there's a possibility of getting some money back because although we, although we used rather large amount of water apparently and drained a reservoir somewhere in the country, we don't have to pay for the sewerage side of it because it all drained into the earth. Are you aware of that, that particular issue with Anglia Water? They, I think we were going to ask them for some money back because they overcharged us for sewerage, didn't they? About a hundred thousand, is it? I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. Funny, Duncan would have been the perfect person to ask that, but all we'll do is we'll take it away and just find out what, where things are.
Yes, it's about a hundred thousand, isn't it, they can pay?
We can't say at the moment, but it's, it's a big number, put that way.
Two hundred thousand then.
No, 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 you're going too high there. Don't be greedy, don't be greedy, Councilor Woodliffe. Don't be greedy. Right, any more questions for Carl? Councilor Isard.
Ah, yeah, it's much easier reading this report and, and well done Chair because it is a lot more. I suppose because I weren't part of that, it's just a couple of things I picked up. I'm a director on the riverside and when it come to inspection of our play equipment, the company put it up by nearly forty percent this year. So we changed companies. I take it you're going to be looking because it's a fifty percent increase on page thirteen of the annual inspection costs higher than budget. So I, I presume that you're looking at the company that do it currently and whether there is, I found two other companies in Boston that can carry out inspections of play equipment. That's something I, I'll take it you're on board with. And really the other thing was just the materials on page fifteen. Rather large increase of nearly two thousand, six hundred and seventy two. What materials were they that we kind of under budgeted for? Do we know precisely?
Excuse me, so can you just clarify where, which?
Yeah, page fifteen, under supply and services materials. We had approved budget of five thousand. But we got a forecast of seven thousand, six hundred and seventy two.
Yeah, this is in relation to the public conveniences and as chairman has explored, you know, the control around those materials will be that some will be bought upfront and put in storage to make sure we are benefiting from buying power. So there's that opportunity. Obviously, we market test all our supplies on a regular basis. But inevitably, and going back also to your point on the play equipment, there are market forces at play, there are increased regulations around what you can and cannot use. That is being passed on to every consumer, including local authorities. So we are, I think it's commendable actually that the budget is coming in as close as it is, given all of these external factors that are unplanned events even. So it's just, you'll always get ups and downs and those materials have gone up. They may continue to stay at that level, they may increase further. This is the whole point of these reports is to monitor that and consider the impact and the affordability of it alongside the procurement processes that we have in place to continually test the market.
I'm going to add to what Carl said because when I questioned the toilet attendants, one of the big issues is the amount of damage in those toilets. And the damage has to be paid for through buying supplies, new equipment. I mean, whether it be the hand dryers or the toilet seats being ripped off or whatever it is. There's a lot of damage in those toilets and those guys have to go in there and clean a lot of mess up. And that's additional cost to what we budgeted for. So I think that's probably why the two thousand spend is probably there. Once you've got to allow for that. I mean, when you're budgeting for damage, you have a figure to work off from the previous year probably and with a bit on top. But when you've got people doing it beyond the normal damage, you're talking about additional monies that's not being accounted for. And I think that's probably why the spend is, it is because those guys were very thorough. They're telling me some of the details and some of the problems that they face when they go into this toilet to have the first thing in the morning or last thing at night. So that is one of the issues I think we've got another problem with is damage to the toilets. Thank you, Carl. Thank you, councillor Isard.
Thanks for that. And the comments really answered a lot of those. It's just that that one didn't have any comments and so that's just something to take forward. Thank you very much, Howard. It's a brilliant report and well done, everybody's work.
Councillor Dory wants another question.
Oh, no, it's just to help councillor Isard. I think the annual inspection costs are probably what Carl said that there's to do with the perhaps a new regulation that's come in. I think our own officers do the inspections. So it's not that we're going to outsource and get a cheaper rate. It's actually our own operatives that go out there and do the work. Is that right, Phil?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Yes, our officers do the inspections weekly. But of course, there is also ROSPA, an annual inspection, and our insurers also do an inspection. So because we just had to be so, so thorough with our play equipment and costs clearly looks like they've gone up. But we can find out exactly what that's for. That's not a problem, but I suspect it may be ROSPA. It's basically good practice because they are the experts in the industry. So we do use them, but we also use our insurers. We actually look at it twice to just to make sure that all our play equipment is kept up to the best standard we can reasonably keep it and inspected to make sure that, you know, remember there are lots of very young children using our equipment and we need to make sure that they are safe.
Are there any more questions before I let Carl go? This is just to say to Carl, Carl is this last day today. Now I'm going on to section one, five, one officer at Kings Lynn. What about that? We all know about it. So we want to wish you all the best. Well, thank you for what you've done here. You've done a tremendous job. I've enjoyed working with you and thoroughly enjoyed your professionalism at all times, along with your colleagues and your team. And I think you've done a cracking job on this budgets for BTAC. And I'd like to wish you every success in your new role. Sorry to see you go, but that is life and you've got to move on and take opportunities when they come that go your way. We're not far from Kings Lynn anyway, we'll come and see you.
You got over that quickly, Barry.
Good luck. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Very kind words.
Thank you. Well done. Right, we'll move on. You can shoot off if you want and go and get a drink. Go on to item three, that page is nineteen now, this is the Boston Pride event. So I'm going to ask councillor Broughton to present his details in the page nineteen of the agenda pack.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, councillors. The proposed events programme for two thousand twenty five, twenty six was presented to BTAC on the twenty eighth of November, two thousand twenty four, where it was agreed that option two would go forward, providing fifty eight thousand, five hundred for the agreed events programme. At that meeting, a committee discussed a desire to host a Boston Pride event and asked that a report be brought forward to the next BTAC meeting on the costs associated with delivering a pride event in order to carry out a budget review. The events team sought the advice and guidance of the organizer, the East Coast Pride, which, can I just add, was very successful for Skegness and the businesses in the town, along with major companies like Butlins and East Midlands Railway getting involved, which I believe shows how important an event like this can get different organisations involved and bring the towns together. This is a reason we got the organizer involved. This is a completely new specialised event that the team do not have experience at. Following these discussions, a full budget was costed up, an event designed to ensure that it's fully accessible to all. We're currently without an events officer and so resources are being drawn in from other teams to ensure the busy events programme can be delivered. The budget for Pride includes additional resources for the project coordinator role, which is essential to support the delivery of this event. It is anticipated the event can be delivered for thirty six thousand pound. This will be in Central Park on Saturday, the twenty sixth of July and consists of on stage performances, stalls, food and entertainment. The team submitted a bid to UKSPF and successfully received twenty five thousand pound funding towards the event, which covers the infrastructure and most of the acts and entertainment. This leaves a deficit of eleven thousand pounds. In the events programme budget presented to BTAC in November, seventeen thousand pounds was allocated towards a music event. It is proposed that this is put towards the Boston Pride event to cover additional entertainment and staffing, as well as allowing a contingency for any unforeseen expenses that may arise from this new event. Any budget not spent would obviously go back into the BTAC funds. The report asks that the committee approves the rework budget for events in twenty five, twenty six to enable the effective delivery of a successful pride event in Boston, two thousand twenty five, which will again continue to show that Boston is a very inclusive town for everyone, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity or sexuality. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Broughton, for that. Are we getting any questions at all? If we'd like to ask any questions. Councillor Woodliffe.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think I can support this. It seems to me that it's a huge amount of money for a one day event. It doesn't, any of the other events we're running, we're running quite a range of events and none of them exceed, what, it's going to be, what, thirty six thousand pounds? I really like to know how you get to thirty six thousand, but it's more than that, isn't it? Arguably, if we give the seventeen thousand pounds we're supposed to be asked for, isn't it, it's what, seventeen thousand pounds? We do have forty, forty two thousand, forty three thousand pounds for a one day event in the park? That's a huge amount of money. I really do think that's a lot of money and I will not be supporting this.
Can we just clarify the numbers? Is that the figure, please?
The figure is we've got twenty five thousand pound UKSPF funding and at the minute we're looking at spending eleven thousand pound of the seventeen. So we're not actually looking at spending the seventeen thousand. That's just a contingency if anything untoward arises.
Right then, it's the twenty five thousand pound funding that we're getting and eleven thousand pound that we from BTAC to spend. So that's going to cost thirty six thousand pounds, but what it could have cost is eleven thousand pounds. All right, councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think an event for Boston probably is a good thing because, I mean, we don't have to think about the cost because it will bring businesses as well to the town. Will bring people around. So that's how you probably mark, it's a kind of a marketing to the town itself. You know, people will get here and I think they will do things. And that's how we can bring people in the future. So I think the event is fine. What I would like to say is page twenty one, I like on two point six. I like the phrase, but any unspent funds will be refunded to BTAC. So any overspend, I think will come back to us. So I will support, I think, the event and I will be very happy to attend it and see it. And I think, like I say, it's a good, a good opportunity for us to mix with each other and bring integration, in fact, to life because at the moment, sometimes people, they are, you know, they don't think about Boston, they don't, you know, they don't see it as the right place to be. However, this kind of event, I think, will make it more positive. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I agree entirely. We are here to serve all sections of the community. We are here to do things for everybody. This is a new event that we've never had here before. And, you know, other towns and cities have had these events and they've been very successful. We've got to be very proactive in all the things that we do as a council. And we've got to support every section of society and every different community. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a great opportunity for Boston to show that it is inclusive. It does care about everybody. And, you know, we want people to come here to this town and be proud of the fact that we're putting on things that you don't normally do. And this is first time for us and I think it's a great opportunity to get the town busy and put Boston on the map. Councillor Broughton.
Just to emphasize again my point earlier on, the East Coast Pride, which was run last year, was the first event in Skegness. And as I said earlier on, businesses like Butlins, East Midlands Railway actually got a train shielded with all the logos and everything on. So to me, discussing earlier on with Marianne about Briar Lane and the transport issues, hopefully we can contact East Midlands and they might do the same again so we can get transport into the town. Again, we're hoping to get all the town involved, the businesses will be involved, hopefully the hospitality and everywhere else and the footfall. Again, the idea of these events is to bring people into the town to make the businesses busier. Obviously, it'll be a market day as well, markets will be busier. And at the end of the day, we want the town to be inclusive, as you've said, Chair. The town to be inclusive to everybody, regardless of the race, religion, sexuality, anything. Boston needs to be inclusive to every single person, man, woman, child, everything. So that's the reason we're looking at bringing events like this in, whether some people might be against it. I know so many people who are for it. And at the end of the day, the East Coast Pride is running again this year in Skegness after the success of last year. So hopefully we will get the same success in Boston as what the East Coast did. There's pride events all over the country, the towns absolutely flourish. And like you take some of the towns which don't do any other events throughout the year, the pride event in the towns across the country absolutely fill the towns, not only with different people from all over the, all over the country, but it brings colour, vibrancy and a goodwill factor to Boston.
The good thing about this event is you've got the professional people, this is what gives me the confidence in this. You've got a professional organisation who know how to run these events successfully, know how to make them work, understand all the implications and the difficulties of overcoming people's thoughts and problems and mindset. They know how to do all that. So that's what gives me the comfort. You've got a professional organisation behind it that's going to make sure it works properly, successfully and for the benefit of all the community. Councillor Gleeson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I welcome this. I mean, look, congratulations to our officers, we've managed to raise twenty five thousand pounds. So we're leveraging our, well, for every pound we're putting in, we're getting just over two from elsewhere. So we are going to be able to deliver a really first class professional event in the town, showing that the town is inclusive, but it's somewhere to go, somewhere for a good event, somewhere worth getting on the bus and coming into the town for, someone worth getting on the train for. Somewhere maybe you'll come in for that and think, well, Boston wasn't that bad, I'll go back again. This is what we need. We need to have our, the heart of our town somewhere people want to be. So I will more than happily move the recommendation that we use the funds that we'd allocated for a music festival. We allocate that, hopefully only spending eleven thousand with some spare provision through things occur. And I'm more than happy to move that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Danny.
I will second the recommendation. Also, I would just like to mention because we, you know, I remember when I was in London, the pride, you know, festival in London was very small and it got bigger. The carnival started small and it got bigger. We have to remember that like the bike night, sometimes we have over four thousand visitors in Boston. So really, if you put four thousand in prospect with twenty pound each, that's eighty thousand pounds funded in the town. That's eighty, it could be more. So we have to look at it financially, it will help us, marketing, it will help us and it will help Boston. And I'm pretty sure that it will be, I think, delivered in a good way.
I don't think anybody can criticize this council and the administration of this council for not doing anything. Because everything that's happened with events is first class, professional, they get results. We put Boston on the map, people come out and support it. And I really think that we have got to show people that we are inclusive and we do really care about every part of society. So councillor Broughton over to you.
Yeah, just quickly again, just carrying on from councillor Danny's point. Obviously, when he said he was in London, events started small. We've only got to look at the Christmas event as an example. The first year we, the administration took over, it, people was very wary after what happened the year before. Last year was absolutely amazing, this year is going to be potentially even better. Let's hope, not just with this event, but other events that were running throughout the year. The Strongman event and the food fest we had last year, that was successful. This year is looking to be even more successful. Hopefully, as councillor Danny said, this can be the first year of an event that's just going to get bigger and bigger and better and better for the town and again, put Boston on the map for the right reasons again.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions before we move on? Right, we're going to propose it from councillor Gleeson, second it from councillor Danny. All those in favour, raise your hands. All those against. We recorded that, Paul? Thank you very much. That is a goer. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Right, all those details were recorded by the officers. Let's go on to item four, the work programme, which is the standing item on page twenty seven of the pack. I'll ask Phil to have a few words on that one. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Chairman. We should probably start with the element we had at the, earlier in the meeting where, you remember, we referred to the community outreach and members discussed identifying community group from each ward to work with emergency planning business and continuity officer. Chairman, which really is really, has members got any update to reply, swap back to the meeting?
Yeah, we did actually say we were going to look at this and do some work in our awards. I don't know if we've got any, any updates on anything at all, anybody? I think it's something that we need to look at and I think probably give ourselves a bit more time. So I think we'd like you to ask you to move that further down the agenda, down the work programme. But I'd like to go on the minutes that all councillors on this committee have said they would look into doing something in their wards and we need to come back at the next BTAC meeting with some answers. If you don't mind, please. Thank you very much. Councillor Isard.
Yeah, I've, I have tried. Unfortunately, about the only volunteer that's come forward is Rodney from the Boston Bell. And of course, bless his cotton heart, he's of, he's of an age, let's just say. And I kind of feel that this is more generated for people that can, can be, let's just say, active on the night if it was required. So I'm going to have to report a failing on my part and probably on Sandip, who's the other ward councillor, in finding anyone who wishes to step forward at the moment. But we will work on it, Barry. We will try and endeavour to find some more enthusiastic supporters.
With your microphone, yeah.
Yeah, and so of course, it's a rather diminishing well of people. They've already doing lots of things and so it is a matter of trying to find new and then that, if you don't actually meet them.
I think we can let this go as an ongoing, ongoing situation and then what we'll probably do is just keep. just keep talking about it from meeting to meeting, just see whether anybody's got any progress to make. It is a difficult one. I appreciate that. I was talking to some people and they, they don't want to get involved or they're too busy doing other things. That's the problem. Finding people to support your work on that project. But anyway, we've made a note of that and we will keep it moving as time moves on. Any more questions on the work programme? Anybody want to mention anything else? Or Phil, any more things to mention?
Basically, this is the last municipal year. So as we go forward, we, we will start to put together the, the agenda for the next municipal year. But we will have, of course, the green flag award book will of course be coming back to the meeting. We've got the links to Councillor Highways to look for an update and also the links, please, of course. And we will note down the sort of the brainstorming workshop session we were, we discussed earlier regarding Central Park and security and, and how we go forward. And of course, on the, on the other element that we will just note as well, as part of the actions, will be the discussion proposed for Bri Lane bus service and, and then potential for it to go to CNC as well following. Okay, and that I think really concludes all I have at the moment, Chair.
Just to, just to ask Paul, if he doesn't mind making sure that, and councillor Danny gets a copy of the, the green pack. And anybody else who should be at the meeting at half past five wasn't available, we have a pack to hand out. So you've got all the information there to, to work off and the dates of all the meetings as well, which are half past five, not five o'clock. Right, let's go on to item five, the BTAC's Small Empowering Healthy Communities Grant. They start on page twenty-nine. I'm going to ask Phil again to just talk it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The, please note that out of ten applications received, only one application to the Empowering Healthy Communities Grant Scheme projected by the working group on the grounds of being out of the area of benefit and therefore not considered a priority. Should committees see fit to approve all recommendations of the small grants working group, all funds from the Empowering Healthy Communities Grant Scheme have been allocated, effectively closing the scheme. And, and as per finance performer attached, should all recommendations small working group be approved, there will be three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five pounds and sixty-two pence to roll over into the new financial year, effectively giving BTAC fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five pounds and sixty-two pence available to allocate across the four rounds in twenty-five, twenty-six financial year.
Right, we do need now to have a proposal and a second for the recommendation. Or any questions first of all? Any question, any, any question on the, on that? So can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Gleeson, second to councillor Isard. Is everybody in favour of that? Thank you very much. We'll, we'll put that down as a yes and agreed. So councillors, that is the end of the business. I'd like to just say this probably is my last time as chairman of this committee. As you know, I'm taking on the role of mayor from, from May. I don't think I should be sitting on this role from May onwards, but I'd like to thank you for all your support. Pardon? Well, there you are. You'll have to see. It could be my last time, put it that way. So I'd like to thank you for all your support for this term. No, it's not political, we're not political here. But anyway, thank you very much for all the, all the support and help you've given us. And thank you very much for being a good committee. We've done a lot of things over the last twelve months. Councillor Isard, before we wrap up, go on then.
I think I'd just like to thank you for chairing this. I think it's been really good. I think we've got a lot done and definitely the finances are a lot more straightforward. So we really need to thank you on that one. Just to, just to finish, we discussed earlier about Central Park. And, and we, we, we made a commitment for a small working group to, to monitor that. I think it's really important because there are concerns. And I think it would be really great if we do a kind of subgroup on Central Park going forward.
That is on the work programme anyway, so we're going to look at that. And also, I'd like to remind you, we are going to have a meeting with Marianne from Bri Lane to discuss some of the issues with that, get a better understanding of that transport situation. Yes, we do. Go on then.
You talked about the transport and I just remember now, I forgot to tell to Marion, because last year, Richard Davis, the highways officer, was with me and we promoted the new lines and new direction on Bri Lane and they were happy with everything. She never mentioned what she's suffering from. And I think I found it, because I could have replied, but it skipped my mind because it was more political going against. But it did. This photo, basically, which is here, it was from that time. Anyway, with your, you know, you know, push, we can push for them to do better at the county.
We will have a meeting, but we'll get the information from there.
We need to.
Can I wish you all a safe journey home? Thank you very much and I'll see you again soon. And thanks for all your support and help over the last twelve months. Thank you.
Been really good, Barry. It's been really, really good.
I love you.